So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Town of Groton Select Board for Monday, March 9th. It's a chatty crowd this evening. As usual, we will start with an announcement section and review of the agenda followed by public comment period. Under the Town Manager's report, we will have a brief update on the CPA percentage change timing. We will talk about what potential reductions could be considered if the mosquito control project is approved and/or if GDPRSD does not use free cash. We will talk briefly about the history of Prescott School sprinkler project expenditures. We will continue review of the town meeting warrant. We will have an update on the Select Board's schedule through the 2020 Springtown meeting, potentially a budget update, and then we will move into at 7:30 or thereabouts, review and consideration to talk about a different updated Town Manager evaluation process and product. Under Other Business, which I think will actually move up to the top, we will get a coronavirus discussion and update. We then have our standard ongoing issues, potential for any liaison reports, and a set of meeting minutes to approve. So who has any announcements? All right, public comment? All right, Town Manager's report.
So I would like to start off with a discussion on the coronavirus. It is obviously dominating the news and dominating our concerns. So we are taking various actions here at the Town Hall. The moderator is going to be stopping by as part of this discussion in a minute. He's about five minutes away to talk about town meeting because I think we need to start discussing that as well in planning if we need to discuss it. But just so everybody knows what we're doing, I'm working with our HR Director and Town Council to draft a policy to address the virus, including employees traveling and coming back in to the country, on how we can address that. I had a conversation with Dr. Cheston today. The school department is in the process of doing the same thing relative to children and staff doing that. Once we get that policy, and hopefully next couple of weeks, I would say, we'll bring that to the board for you to look at and adopt. One of the things we have to do according to Town Council is talk to our unions. So we do have to have that discussion.
I'm sorry, what?
Talk to our unions. So we do have to have, excuse me, we do have to have that discussion. In terms of the Town Hall and the various municipal buildings, our custodial staff is disinfecting regularly. I sent you an email today from the Council on Agent Director letting you know what's happening down in the CLA. She's taking it very, very seriously because that is a population that could be at risk. So we're paying attention to that very closely there as well. With regards to town meeting, as I said, Jason is going to be coming by to discuss that with the board. But one thing I do want to show the board that we've done with regards to the website is if you go to the homepage on the website, right here, there's a link right here on the front page that talks about it. And if you click on that, you will take you right to the Board of Health page. In here, you have a public notice that is sent out by our local Board of Health, the Shobart Board of Health. You have another link here to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts page. So there's a ton of information here for our residents as well, and it's constantly being updated. One of the concerns that we have is if we're going to provide links is that it's constantly being refreshed. Jason Weber mentioned that to me today in an email. So obviously, the state site is constantly being updated. The Shobart Board of Health is updating their site, and then, of course, a very important link is to the CDC. So that is constantly being updated. So people can go to the town's website to get information. It's right on the, as I said, it's right here on the homepage when you come up to Groton. That's the first thing that you see, and you just click, and you can get to that information. So we're taking it seriously. I guess the cases in Massachusetts, would you tell me, doubled this afternoon? So, you know, as people are coming into contact with others because of traveling and the like, it is a concern, and we are going to have a policy to address because I know of three of our employees that have planned trips overseas over the next month or so. So we need to be able to address that if they're coming back. So we're doing everything we can. We're taking it very seriously here at the Town Hall. The Board of Health is on top of it as far as I'm concerned. I think they're doing what they have to do. I did receive an email this afternoon that I'll forward to you, just came in like five minutes ago, from the Board of Health. The Board of Health has substantial powers when it comes to protecting the public's health. So I will forward you the email that talks about what they can do in the event of a potential infection and what steps the Board of Health can take. I'll forward that to you after the meeting. I just got it five minutes ago. So I will get that out to you as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and when Jason gets here, I would like to talk about town meeting because...
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, Siri. When Jason gets here, I'd like to talk about town meeting because that's an assembly of four or 500 people potentially, and we probably should talk about that and what our plans would be for that. So when Jason comes in, we can have that conversation. So I'm happy to answer any questions the board has. But that's what we're doing.
First of all, I want to thank you and everyone who's already put this link on the town website. I was hoping that would happen. I would further suggest, I can talk with you and the Board of Health tomorrow, that we actually, that Board of Health page also has information about rabies and triple E, and maybe we could just make a second page so that we get a page that's totally only about coronavirus.
Oh, so take this stuff off here? Okay.
Yeah, take that other stuff off and put that on a different page. Also, I think there's probably a lot that we, that the town may be called upon to think about. I certainly would volunteer to participate if there needs to be a small group kind of brainstorming some of the things that we need to think about with our emergency management coordinator, who is our fire chief. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mark?
Yep.
Just because absolutely we need to only have links to authorities about the illness and what is happening nationwide, but what we are doing on the local level may need to, we may need to ramp up depending on if there's an outbreak here and how we would communicate that to people in town. And also, I will just add one of the things that I, well, two of the important things that I've read. I am in the older person category who is more at risk, and this applies to everybody who's in the older half of their lives, I guess I would say. It's really important that younger people who may not be terribly, may not get really sick with this, but that they stay home and the minute that they experience, anyone stays home, the minute they experience any symptoms of feeling ill so that they do not spread contamination, misspread the virus around. And the other piece that I've read is that it's really important to keep your distance from people when you are in crowds rather than hugging, shaking hands, not touching, and keeping a six-foot distance is what the CDC recommends. So I also have, because I'm liaison to the Board of Health, had talked to the Board of Health, and a member of the Board of Health is coming. I told him that we probably would not get to this till 7:30, so he may show up at 7:30.
I want to encourage the town government, give some serious thought to how we'll deal with a potential situation where someone enters one of our workplaces and contaminates it. And then we get into the issue of voluntary 14-day quarantine...
That's what the policy's going to address.
Or mandated. This could leave sections of town government, including police, fire, water department, Town Hall employees, to get reduced. And so we need to think about how we keep things working okay in the town during those periods. And then I encourage everybody to give some serious thought to some home planning if they wind up in a situation where they have to stay in their home for 14 days. Food, medicine, stuff for the kids, M&amp;M's. Well, be prepared to feed yourself without going to the grocery store for 14 days.
And if I could add to that, to also remember that you want to protect the other members of the household from catching what you have, so as much separation as possible if you have been exposed.
Okay, so I'd like to just put this on the table for a second until Jason gets here. And when Jason gets here, we'll talk back. So if it's all right with you, I guarantee to make Town Manager's report.
Please do.
So last week, when we looked at the Select Board's schedule, we had planned a couple of months ago to have the second conversation about the Community Preservation Act and whether or not we're going to continue. At that meeting, the board determined to put off any future discussion on the CPA until after town meeting and the town election. But you did ask me to reach out to Town Council, discuss the timing issue and on when you can do a proposed change to the surcharge. So specifically, I asked him if you can do it at a, say, for example, present an article this year to reduce the percentage effective July 1st, 2022, and then do the ballot, or does it have to be at the time you're going to do it? That was the question. I have not heard back from Town Council, so I have nothing to report. I will bring this back when I hear Town Council's opinion. All right? Item number three. Last week's meeting, the Select Board asked me to provide you with the recommended reductions to the municipal budget. Should the town meeting vote to join the central mass mosquito control project and the Groton Dunstable Regional School District not be able to use free cash, our share would be $128,000, which would be a total reduction of $218,950 from the proposed budget. I'm going to ask the Select Board this evening to consider withdrawing that article. I forward you an email from the Board of Health, which I think pretty much opened the door and left the decision up to the board. The email basically said they feel they're doing their due diligence. Whether or not it gets the town meeting or not, that's, you know, that's for somebody else to decide. So obviously, that's something for the board to decide. But should the board decide to go forward and we have the $90,000 issue, which we would have to make up, and Groton Dunstable decides not to use free cash, and our assessment would go up an additional $128,000, which I know there's some question, I had a conversation with Bud today, we don't think that's going to happen, but we should plan for everything because we haven't got their final budget yet. These are the recommended reductions totaling $219,000. I'm not in favor of any of them. I think it's not a good, a good reduction in our budget. It will hurt services that we provide and start taking away from our infrastructure, which I don't want to do. But these would be my recommended cuts. I did not want to lay anybody off.
I assume that these are in order roughly? Or are they...
No, it's a list to get to $218,000.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm sure you're not surprised, I'm not in favor. I think that's what the board asked for. So when we get to the town warrant discussion, I do want to talk about the potential of the board taking a position on that article, but we can talk about that at that time. Are there any questions with this? Does that make sense?
Yes, there's a question.
Yes.
So in the event that Groton Dunstable School District or the school committee chooses to use their free cash, and we were to leave the $90,000 article on, how would this list look in the event that it was a $90,000 shortfall?
Real simple, Josh. I would say increase the dispatch grant dependency about $51,000, and I would do the lifeguards at Sardison Beach, and then I would eliminate the police motorcycle. That would get me to $90,000.
Very good.
Does that answer your question? It is an answer, yeah.
Can I just ask, I believe there have been years that we did not fund lifeguards at Sardison Beach, and was another solution to that found?
Select Board member Deegan and I fundraised, and we raised the $30,000 privately. Josh and I reached out to some people in town, and they donated money to the town to pay for it.
It can only go back to the well so many times.
I agree with that, Josh. I will tell you some news here for consideration, full disclosure. Patricia, off the top of your head, where are we with snow and ice right now?
The end of February, we're going to write down to about $6,000. I think it's close to $20,000 right now.
So as you know, I carried $100,000 in the snow and ice deficit for next year's budget. We're at $20,000. Tom Delaney probably has another $40,000 worth of bills outstanding that Patricia doesn't have yet. Forecast has been, sorry, the forecast has been great. If we don't have to exhaust that, that does free up $100,000 in the budget if the town wants to take that position. Personally, I don't want to commit to three years of $270,000. Once you get in, you have to commit to the three years. So I'm concerned with that particular piece. You know, you could take a one-year solution that I just suggested, but there's two more years of $180,000 that we'd have to deal with. So when we get to that discussion, we get there. But I just saw Jason and Bob...
Can I just ask one other question on the budget? Has there been any change in news from the school district about their budget plan?
I have not heard anything. Have you heard anything?
Nope.
Have you heard anything, Bud?
No, you and I talked about this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So if I can revert back to coronavirus?
Yes, and now our Board of Health member is here, we should just inform you that we had a fair amount of discussion right at the beginning of the meeting, not the way I anticipated. Thank you for coming. We may still touch on some things here.
Do I come up to the table?
Sure.
So one of the things, Jason and I had a brief conversation this morning. One of the concerns is assembly, is people in a room, a confined space. Obviously, if you have town meeting, you have anywhere from 300 to 500 people at an annual town meeting?
Possibly.
Possibly. And you'll have them all in the room at the same time. So the question is, should we start planning for the event that there's a breakout in our town meeting? It's April 27th. That does raise some concern because we have to pass a budget. That's probably the single most important thing on the warrant in terms of the operation of the town. Without a budget, we shut down on July 1st. So the question is, how do we do that? I don't know if you have any ideas or thoughts, because I don't.
So you're in the situation now where you haven't posted the warrant yet.
Correct.
So you can still change the date. It's within your authority to do that. Once you post the warrant, you have relinquished that authority, and the meeting has to happen on that day. Except I think it was two years ago, the legislature passed Section 10A of, I think, Chapter 39, that gives the moderator the authority to postpone a town meeting in the event of a weather emergency or public safety emergency. And this, I think, could be categorized as public safety. There's a process that is required, but it's fairly standard. The meeting could then be postponed. It would have to be called within 30 days of the postponed day. So, but you could see the situation where maybe you put it off until the end of May.
Let me ask you a question.
You could convene it on the 30th?
Continue.
Continue it? You could just do the...
The 27th, right?
Whatever, I'm sorry, the 27th. You could just bring up one, the budget on that day? It wouldn't even have to be the full budget. It could be some sort of a maintenance budget until we have a chance to convene and discuss the entire budget, as long as it fell under the four corners of the budget article. And then, you know, I, as moderator, could allow just that to be brought up, and then the rest of the meeting be postponed until a time certain when we think that this scare will pass.
If I may?
Yeah.
With regard to your first point, we called for the meeting already. We opened the warrant, we closed the warrant. So changing the date at this point, I would want to get an opinion from Council on whether or not we can even do that because we've already called for it. The warrants could open and close. It's in the hands of the board right now. We've advertised a public hearing on the warrant. So I'd like to just understand if we can. I don't see any reason why we couldn't reschedule the date, but I would like to find that out first.
Option would be to have it on a Saturday, have it outside in the bleachers at the high school field.
If the weather's good.
I understand that, but I'm just throwing an option.
It is a viable option.
It is a viable option.
You need to grab the microphone. So, Mark, in terms of kind of needing to be effective, how late can we go with like a budget decision?
You can vote the budget on June 30th.
And what would be your recommendation?
We do before June 30th. I would say, I would want it like June 1st. I'd say right after, give us 30 days.
A month, sure.
Because, you know, there's a lot of work that, she's looking at me right now. How dare you say that? There's a lot of work that the town accountant has to do to get the books up and running so that the budget can go into effect. So I'd say June 1st would probably be...
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would just issue a caution that we wouldn't want to rush through anything without a fullness of the meeting, having voters who wish to participate be able to be there.
Correct.
And if there are people who can't be there because they fear catching the disease or the virus, then passing the entire budget for the entire year would seem to be somewhat unfair.
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes sense to consider an outdoor venue. I think it makes sense to consider, I don't know whether we have the ability to do it kind of in classrooms and connect digitally. I know we've done overflow into other venues. Again, that would probably be...
Then again...
...honest to do the whole meeting, but...
Right, that presents challenges because each room would then have to have an assistant moderator to oversee that room.
Other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Does any of this change if the Commonwealth declares a state of emergency?
Right. So I was going to suggest that we are not the only town who has town meeting in the spring, and my guess would be that if the situation gets worse, there will be, have to be some decision-making for the whole Commonwealth that either, you know, extends deadlines or changes some rules about things. The state of Rhode Island declared a state of emergency today, and so it's not unlikely to happen here also. But, I mean, I did not want to be the person to ask the question about town meeting. I appreciate that you brought it up because it had occurred to me.
Yeah, there's been discussion on the level of the Mass Moderators Association, and I believe also the Mass Municipal, about this and what guidance would those organizations offer, towns and the legislature and the governors that have figured this out.
One of the unknowns that we have to, I think, factor into what we're thinking here is, we really, nobody really knows whether 30 days from the current state, the current date planned for town meeting, we'll be better off or worse off. So, because nobody knows. So that's another variable that we're, you know, that we're wrestling with as we think about all these alternatives.
So let me find out from Town Council the ability to change the date. I'll stay in touch with Jason to talk about potential solutions. We'll talk about the potential of an outdoor. That leaves a whole bunch of sound system issues that we have to figure out and stuff, but we'll figure that out. And then we'll report back to the board. I'll put this on the agenda for next week, and we'll talk about it again because we should have more information by then.
Just related to that, it also occurred to me that we may get to a point where more people need to be calling in for meetings, and that there's tricky quorum rules about that. If that comes up in discussion with state officials at any time, you know, that they might be encouraged to offer some relief on that if that needs to...
Yeah, because the way the law reads now, you have to have a quorum in the room to allow somebody to call into the meeting.
Right.
Okay. So I just, I'm glad we had this discussion tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for stopping by. And I will report back to the board next week with Town Council's decision.
Can you, Mark, also start to do a little bit of thinking, and we don't need a response back next week or anything like that, but a little bit of thinking about what articles or how you would do, I don't know, do you do a quarter of the budget or kind of start thinking?
Okay, next on my Town Manager's report. At last week's meeting, the board asked for breakdown of what was spent thus far from the Prescott School sprinkler system appropriation. As you know, the 2018 Springtown meeting appropriated $275,000 for the purpose. So there were two things that happened since that appropriation that affected it. Now, keep in mind that one of the main reasons that we came to the board originally to spend some of the money, and to the CPC, to spend some of the money on handicap issues over at the school, is that we were anticipating the potential to apply for a massive storage grant, which would allow us to get 50% of the cost. So that was, if the board will recall, I came to you and said I had been talking to Bruce Eastum, and there was the potential of receiving a grant. So we needed to make some handicap improvements to allow the Friends of Prescott to start utilizing the building, and we needed to put in some doors to improve the handicap accessibility and the fire rating and things like that. So I went to the board, the board approved it, I went to the CPC, they approved it, we spent the money, the CPC paid the bills. Then we found out we couldn't get the grant, and we also found out that nobody wanted to bid on it without specifications. So I came back to the board and asked for permission to spend up to $30,000 to hire an engineer to come in and actually develop the bid specs. So we went to BLW engineers, they developed the specs, cost 26, so it was under the $30,000 the original estimate was, and we spent that money. So the remaining balance is $218,209. We've spent the 50 grand doing what we needed to do to get the building up and running and get the specs done. We're out to bid right now. As a matter of fact, Wednesday is the first day that specifications are available for the project. Bids are due on April 15th, and we will have the answer to you on what the cost will be, the final cost. There is a placeholder on article for the CPA recommendations, a placeholder of $50,000 to replace the 50 that we spent, which makes sense to do that if it stays with the 275. If it's greater than 275, then you're going to have an issue where the town meeting and the CPC are going to have to determine if they want to spend more of the historic or the unallocated bucket to pay for this. Does that answer the question the board raised last week?
Greater than 275 or greater than the 218, 209?
Greater than the 218. I'm sorry, Josh, I had the 50 grand in my head. You're 100% correct. Greater than the 218, 209.
And the current kind of out-for bid, this is the third?
Third out-for bid, yep. First time we went out for bid, we did it a design build. Nobody wanted to do the design build. The second time, we did have plans developed, but the one person who wanted to bid on it wasn't deCam certified, so we could not accept any bids the second time. Since that time, the Friends of Prescott have been awesome, working with us to reach out to vendors across the Commonwealth that are deCam certified for this purpose. So hopefully, we will get some bids on April 15th. Any other questions?
I was just going to add, I went back and looked in the town report for that town meeting vote in two years ago, and in the summary, well, first of all, the title of the article was "For Prescott School Upgrades."
Yep.
In the summary, it specifically mentioned sprinkler system and improvements to make the building more accessible to people with disabilities. And in the discussion that was reported, it was also stated that this was for the sprinkler system and automatic accessibility doors. So I think that that is exactly what that money was spent on.
Absolutely, but I also want to point out that I didn't spend any money without coming to you first and then going to the CPC for permission, just to make sure everything was above board. So it's full disclosure, public, everybody was involved in the decision-making process to do that. But you're right, Becky, that is absolutely correct. Any other questions on that? Okay. In closing the warrant, I've given you the latest revised draft of the 2020 Springtown meeting warrant. I've updated it to address Town Council's edits and questions and concerns that the board had at last week's meeting. In addition, you asked for some additional information for some of the articles. So what I've done is I've gone through this, and I want to let you know what specific changes I've made to the warrant, if you would indulge me. I'll go right through this so everybody understands. With regards to the capital budget, we've increased or updated the summary on the DPW building maintenance and the Park Department capital to reflect exactly what that money's going to be spent on. So the summary in the document will tell you exactly what's happening with those two issues. Yes?
Do we know what they mean by sanitary facility center at Cowpont?
I don't, but I would imagine they are looking at either building something that would have a septic system or bringing in more permanent porta potters.
Okay, I also wondered what the Voidewitz Field Design and Court Construction...
Similar to what they did to the field in West Groton, upgraded the court, upgraded the facility there.
The basketball court?
Yes.
Okay.
Remember what we did out in, I can't think, Cutler Field?
Lost Lake.
Well, we did it at Lost Lake, but we did it behind the library, and we also did it at Cutler Field.
Maybe it should say basketball, the Voidewitz Field Design and Basketball Court?
I can add the word basketball, yep.
I thought it's a multifunctional court.
Oh, could be.
The Voidewitz Field involves a tennis court.
So maybe it's a tennis court out there too. But I know they're trying to upgrade the facilities, similar to what they did at Cutler Field. So that's their plan. And then the DPW, we're going to be doing some... And then the DPW, we're gonna be doing some pointing and fixing the town hall in the back door here at Town Hall, as well as doing some work at Legion Hall on repointing that building. Also-
Can you grab the microphone, Mary? I'm sorry.
On the Building Maintenance Warrant, that does not include Prescott, does it?
No. Nope. Prescott, we have a separate appropriation that we appropriated in two consecutive town meetings totaling, I want to say 60,000? Patricia, do you remember how much we appropriated for that, like 70, 80,000? We've already appropriated Prescott's 78,000.
77 with 1 point and then 60 would be your report.
Thank you.
At some point, Mark, can you either get clarification or ask someone from Parks to come to talk a little bit? I'm concerned with the sanitary facility, that this is kind of the first $10,000 of, I don't know, what.
Well, yeah, because when it says concept of a sanitary facility, they want to build a porta, they want to build a permanent bathroom structure there. So that's exactly what that means.
As opposed to porta-potties.
Yes, or making the porta-potties more permanent in the location and building around that. There's a lot of discussion.
I think it would be beneficial to understand kind of what they're conceiving of.
We invited them.
Thank you.
At the request of Josh, I've worked with the DPW Director and the Police Chief to change the way we'll be providing the pickup truck to the Police Department. What we're going to do is we are going to give one of our current DPW pickups, 2018 Dodge Ram, to the Police Department, and then getting two pickup trucks for the DPW. There's gonna be no change in the total appropriation, but we are redistributing who gets what trucks. So we're gonna give frontline trucks, new trucks to the DPW, and giving them our best pickup truck that the DPW has now. I think that's what Josh asked for last week. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I had discussions with Tom Delaney and Troy Connolly, the DPW foreman. And then Mark spoke with Chief Luther about this. And the rationale behind this was that while the chief wanted a truck to both plow his lot and be able to move things like barricades and have a four-wheel drive vehicle when necessary, the 2018 Dodge Ram truck gets horrible mileage and it's used all the time. So the chief had absolutely no reservations about getting that 2018 truck because it was gonna be low use, not driven a tremendous amount, more or less taking care of the property and things like I mentioned. Whereas the DPW could use a much more fuel-efficient vehicle. So everybody kind of agreed on that swap and had no net change on the overall capital budget. So, thank you.
Article 7, the Police Generator, the board asked me to update that, so we put in the cost. So we've done that, so that's been updated. On Article 8, the board had asked that I revise the summary to say that it considers the building and the grounds. I've done that. Article 10, special legislation, we changed the sponsors to Commissioner of Trust Funds. That's been done. The Complete Streets Engineering, we've updated the summary to include the anticipated projects. So that has been done. We've removed Articles 13 and 14 from the warrant, as requested by the board, and renumbered the Articles moving along, yes?
I just was gonna ask, can we have more discussion around 11 with someone with more information?
They'll be here next week.
They'll be-
They'll be here next week, yeah. Oh, just so you know, next week is the public hearing. And we invited everybody that has an article to the meeting to discuss this.
So I don't need to ask one by one by one?
I hope you don't.
Gotcha.
But you can. They should all be here.
Becky?
Maybe we'll get to this when we go through it, but the summary on Article 12 still makes reference to Article 13.
Oh, I'll have to fix that.
We gotta take that out.
Yep, thank you for telling me that. I should have caught that.
That's all right. There's plenty of time. That's why you have a board.
I was wondering why you five are here. Thank you. I'm joking. Article 17, the zoning amendment on the site plan, you had asked for an explanation. Basically, there was a, I won't say a dispute, but a difference of opinion on what is minor, what is major, based on a couple of site plans. 240 Main Street, the Donlands, and then some housing facilities at Groton School. So they wanted to clarify it. And basically, any change of use that exceeds one of the major review thresholds, being greater than 1,000 square feet of building area, will require a full site plan review. So they're just saying, okay, this is not a minor site plan. If it's more than 1,000 or you're adding six more parking spots, it is now major and it goes before the full planning board. So that clarifies that particular issue. And then on Articles 18 and 19, it talks about how they're gonna deal with accessory, attached and detached accessory apartments. And I've given you an explanation here from Takashi. He will be here next week at the public hearing to get into more detail on this. The Planning Board has already held their special permits. I did receive a request from the Chair today to find out what the ZBA's position on this is, and we're trying to track that down. Takashi believes he did talk to the ZBA and they did review this, but he wants to clarify that just to make sure. So we'll be talking about this next week as well. Article 24, the board had asked for an explanation on what we spent Town Force Funds on. So since 2009, I know this is gonna shock you, they spent $2,400 on tree removal. That's it. That's where they spent the money. I think, John, you asked that question last week. So that's it. So I did all of the changes. We're going to have the public hearing next Monday, the 16th, with the Finance Committee beginning at 7:15. So hopefully, there'll be a lot of discussion there. The only issue that I want the board to consider and take up next week, another issue rather, that I would like you to consider, is removing the mosquito control project article from the warrant. We have voted now at Town Meeting three times, Town Meeting has spoken. And I know this board has had debates in the past on the role of Town Meeting and the direction of Town Meeting, and when Town Meeting speaks, you listen to Town Meeting. We went and asked to join the mosquito control project, which Town Meeting originally adopted. Six months later, we asked Town Meeting to take it because we had a budgetary problem. Town Meeting voted to remove us from mosquito control project. And then the Board of Health brought it back one more time a year later, and Town Meeting rejected it. So we've already had three votes at Town Meeting on this. We've already had the do-over vote. And it just seems to me that we keep bringing something back over and over again. And I know this board has debated that in the past, just for your consideration.
So are you, are we not gonna vote on that tonight?
You can. I put it on here for you to discuss it. Although I think you should give the Board of Health the opportunity to come to the public hearing next week with the Finance Committee and have them weigh in on it as well before you make a final decision. That's just my recommendation. I think the Board of Health should have the opportunity next week. And I would love to hear the opinion of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee may say, "Go for it." I don't know. But I think that's probably when you want to do it, if that's okay.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, do you just grab the microphone, Mark?
Yeah, I, like in our last board meeting, we voted to withdraw this article.
No, that's not the email that I received. I think I forwarded the email to the board that Jason Weber sent and told me that you did not remove it from the warrant.
Oh, okay.
I think I said that to you.
You did.
Yes, you did.
Well, I think we should listen to Bob.
Not a reason for voting, I think. We were total funds, weren't we?
The funds aren't there, so, but, that's fun. I thought Jason's email said they left it on, but did I miss read that?
I don't know when they last met versus when that email.
Okay, we'll find out next week. I will clarify that.
Thank you.
Okay. And then finally, on my Town Manager's Report, I have updated the-
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we move away from the warrant?
We didn't finish all the stuff.
We gotta go through the whole warrant.
Are we gonna go through the whole warrant?
I did that last week. Nothing else changed other than this.
So I just had one question.
Please.
On Article 30, which is amounts in enterprise funds, I think?
Let me get it up. I have the warrant right here. What'd you say, Article 30?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Becky. There has to be an easy way to do this. I haven't figured it out yet.
Right there. So the line that says stormwater management is, we're, earlier in the warrant, we're gonna theoretically vote to create the enterprise fund for the MS4?
This is different. No, no, this is different. Currently, right now, the Stormwater Committee has permit hearings that they have on a regular basis. And what they do is they charge or they require any project to give them money so that they can hire an engineer to review the plans.
Right.
It's paid through the revolving fund. The MS4 permit is something totally separate that's going to be an enterprise fund. So this is not the same-
This is just a revolving-
This is a revolving fund, so money comes in and money goes out when they hire experts, when they have a stormwater permit that they're dealing with. That's what that is. And I will also let you know, I'm glad you brought this article up, I have reduced the Affordable Housing Marketing from 50,000 to 20,000 at the request of the Town Accountant and the Housing Coordinator because they never get close to 50,000 on these things and they fill 20,000. So I changed that today. So that, when you get the warrant next week, you'll see that at 20,000. But does that answer your question, Becky?
Yes, but we, so, all of these funds, money comes in from somebody other than the town?
Yep.
And is used for something. So Affordable Housing Marketing, where does the money come from?
It comes from developers. It comes from, we've had people donate money to the trust or grant, gift money to the trust to spend on marketing issues. But when a housing development becomes available and we need to put somebody low income, they pay us to market it and work with them to get it done, and that's where the money goes.
So when you said-
So the Planning Board does a subdivision or something like that.
So when you said you're reducing it, that means you're just reducing how much they can spend?
In a given year.
And any money that is in that revolving fund right now just stays?
Stay, correct.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify, these are spending limits, correct, not-
Correct.
-fund caps?
Spending limits in a given year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the warrant?
Okay. So back to the, back to the schedule.
Maravi?
I think we're on-
Here we are.
Meetings.
So next week, again, of course, is the public hearing on the warrant. And then the following week, we will, we will follow up on the warrant. Any leftover issues that we need to discuss or deal with. We'll also have the first draft of the Housing Reduction Plan at that time, and then any budget update that I need to give you. We still have March 30th, blank, there's a potential meeting. But I was asked to let you know, the Town Council comes in on the last Monday of the month. And he comes in at 4 o'clock for Town Hall office hours. They've been very beneficial for Town Department Heads and some committees have come in. Board members, you're invited to obviously attend. And then he usually stays for the meeting. This week, he just leave after the office hours and not stay for the meeting. Usually, his office hours run from 4 to 6 because he likes to go and grab a bite to eat before coming back to the, to the board meeting. The following week, we'll finalize the warrant, we'll post it. The week after that, we will have Town Meeting prepped. We also have to issue your annual fuel storage licenses. I know that's the highlight of the year for the board. And then the following week is Patriots Day. If we need to meet on the 21st, we can. And then, of course, depending on what we decide to do, Town Meeting will be on the 27th. So that's the schedule moving forward. And then finally, as is our practice during budget season, I usually set aside time for the FY '21 budget update. I have no new update, other than what I told you before about the snow and ice deficit.
You know, I realized this is also related to the warrant, the new dog policy?
Yes.
I had some questions about that.
Sure, if you go to that. Let me get it up on the screen. Town Council did a nice job, I think, bringing us into compliance with the with state law. So this is a whole new update to our dog by law, Article 20. Yes, Becky?
So on that first page where it talks about complaint. So I just want to clarify my understanding here. This means that there's only one kind of form to fill out if there is a dog complaint. Is that right?
Correct. It is the form that the grown dog officer has.
So, I mean, we had a recent issue with somebody not filling out the official complaint, but that, that goes away, that potential problem goes away with this change. Is that right?
Correct.
That's excellent. Under dangerous dog, where it makes a reference to other law, another chapter, do you know what that's all about?
That is the Chapter 140, Section 157. That is the state law that regulates dangerous dogs. It's an issue that we had where our bylaw was out of compliance with that section of the law. So if you look at, if you look at our section now, if you go down and you look at when a dog is declared dangerous,
Right.
what has to happen, that's actually 140, 157A, right there. So it's in our, it's in our bylaw right now. This is the, this primarily, this section right here is the section that was out of compliance with state law.
So I don't understand this sentence then that says, "No dog shall be deemed to be a dangerous dog if any of the circumstances provided in MGL 40, 157A apply." What, I don't get that.
In that listing in the state law,
Yeah.
it identifies certain behaviors and other activities that cannot be determined to be dangerous, that the dog is a dangerous dog.
Okay.
And they list them out.
So that, but we don't list them here?
We don't list them again. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. We list what actions we can take.
Okay. On the, what's the third page here? I guess it's, yeah, up there in H. There. I believe there's a little bit of a grammar issue there. Being a dog which deposits solid waste not removed or, I mean, you can't say not removed or not improperly, you want to say not removed or not properly disposed.
So you want me to add the word "not"?
And take out "im," and take out "im" and write "not."
Oh, okay.
So that it's clear what the meaning is, otherwise it-
We can do that.
You've got two negatives canceling each other out. Okay, then on the next page, the nuisance or dangerous dog complaints?
Yes.
It, I believe there, there should be a little bit of a change where it says disposition. I would like it to say, "The town manager is designated by the Select Board to oversee the process of responding to all nuisance or dangerous dog complaints." I think it only confuses things to say all those words about the Select Board or designees.
Can you send me that word if the board is in agreement and I'll update it?
Yeah, and if we made that change, I would then suggest that the next section C say, "The town manager or his or her designate shall investigate," and go on to say, "Including the examination under oath, blah, 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 blah." So it says two things. The first thing says that the select, the town manager is the person in charge. Second, or the new C will say, "And the town manager will do this." He'll have, he'll conduct an investigation or oversee an investigation.
Can you work with Becky, Mark, to put that together first?
Yes.
I'll be happy to send it-
Thank you, Becky.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that was all that I had.
Okay. All right, so I have no budget update. And so we can go to other business right now. I'm sorry.
John?
Okay, the bylaw that this is replacing, or will replace if it's approved, had a section in it on fines.
I get it-
What are we doing about that?
That's a very good question. As a matter of fact, the town clerk asked me the same question today. And I reached out to Town Council and asked for clarification.
Oh, right.
So I'm waiting to hear back from him.
Yeah, because there is a difference in fines.
Correct.
Well, there's no fines mentioned in here.
Right.
So the question was-
Or no fees.
Yeah, good for you to pick the-
Can the Select, the town clerk picked that up, and I asked Town Council for clarification. I should have mentioned that. And the question that we asked is, can the Select Board do that through a regulation, which I would rather do because it's more easily changed. If it's a regulation, we would not have to go back to Town Meeting. The Select Board can just set it like you do building permit fees and the like now. So I will have an answer for you on that once I hear back from Town Council. Thank you, John. So, that's all I have on that. So the 7:30 agenda item is the Town Manager evaluation. And I will turn it over to Select Board Member Guy.
Let me call you Pandora.
Okay. I went through one performance evaluation process with the board. And as I, but I paid attention to it as the years went by before I became a member of the board. And I wound up concerned after that first year of actually participating that there were two areas that seemed to just cause a significant amount of distress, I'll call it. it, um, for all the parties that were involved in one fashion or another. And the first one of those, um, was the challenge for the chair to take five separate, uh, evaluation forms that we were using, uh, and turn that into one form that represents everybody. And the issues that were floating around were such topics as, well, I wrote this comment or I wrote that comment, and it didn't repeat, it didn't appear in the, in the final report. So it's very difficult, uh, for the, uh, the other related piece is, it's very difficult for a human being, uh, be it anybody who is the chair, who has already done a personal evaluation, to then integrate four other evaluations into it. Everybody tries the best they can do, but, um, it, it's very difficult. So I stepped back and, and said, "What, what might we do that would, um, reduce some of this stress and distress and, um, uh, reduce the amount of time that the select board and, and, uh, HR director and Mark and, uh, spend in getting one of these things done?" Because there, I, I guess a couple of years ago, there, you know, there was like huge delays and people not turning in their evaluations, and we just kept kicking it down the road and kicking it down the road. Um, so I looked for a way to, to proceed where, um, we would speed up the process while maintaining, um, quality feedback for the, um, town manager. So I started by meeting, um, with Melissa, our HR director, and she put a query out to, um, her network, and, um, they came back with 13 representative from different towns. And I'll tell you, there's no two of them are the like. Okay? It, it's, everybody's got a different idea how to do that. But we looked at them closely, um, she and I did. So-
John, can some of the towns just, just name some of the towns a couple of them?
Oh, sure.
Christopher Kicks.
Yep.
Area of, uh-
Amherst. I'll give you all 13.
Did you choose the towns because of-
No, she just sent out a general query, and these were the ones that responded. Uh, Northbridge. Uh, Town of Burlington. Harvard. Pembroke.
I'm good. I just wanted to know if you, I'm good. I just want to know if we've chosen for-
It's a pretty, it's a pretty mix.
Yeah.
A pretty good mix. Uh, and you, this is the only copies we have of them, but they're, they're available for anybody who would like to, to look at them. Um, so, I went to work and put together, um, a proposed solution, and we'll go to the next slide. We kind of talked about this a little bit, the overview of the current process. Um, I don't think there's any surprises there. Um, I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, I then took a stab at writing a problem statement. Uh, I've talked to that a little bit already. One of the other issues that I saw is that we had a lot of, the evaluator would write a comment or a recommendation, and then the town manager would, would have an opportunity to rebut some or all of that. And that caused a lot of, uh, uh, loss in my mind of the effectiveness of, of doing the reviews, because basically one person said X, the other person said, "No, it wasn't X." So what did we learn from that? Um, doesn't seem to me like, like we learned very much. Uh, so, that was another piece that's in here. So let's go to the next, uh, looks. Um, the proposed solution, um, to the best of my knowledge, it meets all Commonwealth of Mass legal reg, requirements. Uh, it, it requires a meaningful feedback conversation between each individual evaluator and the town manager. So it's, it's a requirement as part of the process that, um, there will be a conversation around performance, uh, between the, each individual evaluator and the town manager. What I'm proposing eliminates written comments and rebuttals. The thoughts for each select board member will be incorporated in their entirety in the final evaluation document. Provides an easy judgment-free, uh, compilation process for the select board chair and the human resource director, and frees up some time for the select board members to spend on other equally important town management duties.
Can I ask you a question, John?
Sure.
When you say the thoughts of each select board member, do you mean-
I'm sorry, say again.
When you say the thoughts of each select board member, do you mean the written comments?
No. This has no written comments in it except for, what I'm proposing has no written comments in it except for the town manager's self appro, uh, self-assessment.
Yeah, I think we need to hear how that is.
Okay. All right. So, um, let's go to the next slide. Um, there is, and you're going to get our copy of this when we're done. I created an evaluator's workbook, and, um, these are the sections that are in it. And when you look at personal development, planning, team player, conduct of meetings, and competencies, those are the same ones that we're using now, and the questions, uh, in each one of those is the same ones we're using now. So this is pretty straight, pretty straightforward. Next page. And since everything in the workbook is reduced to a number, um, you have to compile those at the end. Uh, so I wrote a little program in Excel that, um, you put all this information into, and then it, um, totals it up for you.
Yep.
Um, and then the last page-
So, so hold on, I have another question.
Yep.
So a composite scale, is, is this the average or the median?
Let's let him explain.
No, it's not. It's the actual score. In other words, uh-
High fives would be 25.
If everybody gave a five for a particular one, it's going to be 25.
God, I, thank you.
Okay. That's how, that's how I built it. And, um, there's a, you don't always, you're not going to always have five evaluators. So it makes a difference in creating the scale, um, of how many people actually submitted reports. And the reason you might not is because when I wrote the, the new policy, the draft of it, I, and, and in light of the fact that we changed when we do it from January to the 1st of July, that a new member elected in May really wouldn't have had an opportunity, um, to assess a performance. So I've created scales for five evaluators, four and three, and I don't think we would do one without at least a, a majority of the board submitting, um, performance reviews. But again, if you want to, you can, you can do that. So this, then, is what the final form looks like. Um, and on the left side, uh, under where it says page seven, is the score associated with each member's evaluation. Now, the option is there to, to call the members, to use color codes, to put actual names there if you want to of the select board members. So, understand, I just put a placeholder in here, and the numbers here are just from my testing of the compilation thing, so don't read anything into, into those. And on the other side is the rating in each of the breakdowns, the personnel development, the personal development, planning, team player, conduct at meetings, and competencies. So you get to see that, that score. Um, and the rest of it's just some signing. So that, that is essentially what I'm proposing. I don't necessarily expect any decision on that or what you want to do with it, um, but we have a chance to have feedback come back and, um-
Is this just what was in the packet?
No, it's copies of everything in the packet, including that.
Okay. I figured out what was in the packet, but thank you.
No, there's a workbook in the packet.
Right. That was my gun, right.
It's a compilation component.
It's a lot of work you did.
Absolutely.
So are we going to discuss this more?
Yeah, I mean, the, the first thing I wanted to do is to thank John for taking this on, that this, just because it can be summarized succinctly and clearly in three minutes, um, is, is no indication of the amount of work and effort and confusion that was in this before. And we very much appreciate, John, your efforts.
Can I second that? I, I'm just really impressed, John, um, because you clearly, uh, hit the nail on the head with the description of the problems, and, so I don't know fully exactly, I haven't, you know, looked at how it's going to work, but I'm really happy that you did that, and thank you for getting us going on that.
In your packet is, um, what you see on the screen in two colors.
Yep. Right.
You know us well.
Exactly.
No, quite frankly, it was Mark who said, "You gotta do that."
Um, so in terms-
I know you well.
Yeah, exactly. In terms of process, my assumption is that we'll have some discussion tonight, and then we'll all need to kind of do another round of review of everything we've gotten and heard and seen before we make any decisions. Does that make sense to folks? Is that what other people anticipated as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you want, did you say town council review?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Do you think that's a good idea?
I think that's a very good idea.
Yeah, I do too. Um, so, questions, comments, thoughts?
Yes. So, John, um, I realize the tool, the actual tool, and that's what you're calling the, the workbook, right?
Yeah, I did all this in Excel.
Right, this is-
That's why I use workbook.
Okay. Um, so in the past, the town manager has had goals that we had set for him, and then he evaluated himself against those goals.
So if you-
But at this point, we don't really, we have goals.
No, we do that. If you go to the, um, workbook-
Yes.
For evaluation, go to page two or three, you'll see those are goals.
Right.
And assessment on the goals.
But we didn't set any goals for the town manager at this point, other than to support our goals. Is that correct, Mark?
Yeah, the, the, we, I thought we decided that your goal was my goal for the year, and then you added another three months, six months worth of goals.
And those are his, those are the goals, then, that you'd be evaluating.
If, if you choose to continue to say that there are just, the select board's goals are the same as the town manager's goals.
Okay, I get it, okay.
If you wanted to break those out-
You can do that.
This will accommodate that.
I have, I have done things over the last year, I think.
Well, right, I mean, that was, my first thought was, wait, we didn't set any goals, so how is he gonna, but you're right, we decided that they would be the select board goals. Okay. And then, the part that we do is like what we used to do, except with no comments.
I beg your pardon?
The part we do here is the same as the checklists and all that we used to do, but we don't write any comments.
Right.
Is that correct?
And what replaces the writing of the comments is the requirement of a face-to-face conversation with the town manager regarding his or her performance. So there's ample opportunity to provide verbal feedback either way, um, without getting us into the, uh, issues that surround writing all this stuff down.
Right.
Does that, I don't want to cut you off, but I also would.
Um, yeah, um, so far-
Okay.
I'm right, I'm okay. I'm sure I'll have other questions.
Yeah.
Mike, John, do you see this working, we go through the evaluation, then sit with the town manager individually?
Yes.
Do your evaluations-
To talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, may want to talk about, uh, things that you'd like to see him do differently, or where he, where you think we could do better. Um, he may wish to talk to you about, uh, no, I would ask him to say, "Is there anything about the way I'm operating that makes you uncomfortable, or is there something I could change that would make things easier for you?" So it's a two-way, uh, conversation.
Could be, you could also be pleased with the performance of the town manager.
Of course, of course. Does that answer your-
Yes, it does. Thanks.
You go ahead, Becky. So in your review of all the other ways that boards did this, I guess I'm, I'm trying to think this through, the one piece that might be missing is, uh, communication between the five members about something that seemed, you know, sort of serious, but didn't, that came out maybe in the conversation as opposed to in the, in the checklist?
I'm not sure I understand what you're, what you're asking about.
I think this is the, the, the problem at the core of the open meeting and, and what is the, the legal constraints that we're operating under, that as a board, other than through sharing these checklists that we will see, um, there's no, mm, no other way to share information between us.
Well, there's the verbal conversation.
It should be between the board.
But that's one, that's one-
Not between the board members.
You're right, that, and that's what I'm asking. Did you, did you run into any ways that boards found to share within the board?
No, because the state pretty much rules that.
The state makes it impossible.
The only reason that I could find for a member's individual response to become public record, I mean, to become public, a public document, is if it's discussed at a board meeting.
Right.
Otherwise, it's, and, when you look, get a chance to read the, um, new process in detail, you'll see that, uh, we would keep the individual evaluations for 45 days after we've done the final, and then they'll be destroyed. And we'll keep the, um, compilation sheet of papers for 45 days in case anybody's concerned and we need to do an audit or anything like that. Melissa has, right now, huge collection of these things.
I know.
I don't, I don't know how they're particularly helpful, because you're doing an evaluation, not of somebody that you watched on television for five years, you're, you're doing an evaluation on this person's performance for the last 12 months. Um, so I just don't see the, um, the value in, in hanging on to these things, um, for long, long periods of time. So, and neither does Melissa. So, all of that's for your, um, thinking about, and we'll see where we go.
So I'm wondering about, I, to me, it feels like there's sometimes benefit in seeing kind of where everybody ranked and then having a conversation about, "Oh, great, we all let this was a five," or, "Wow, we really spanned the gamut here." Is there an opportunity, or how do people feel about the idea of adding in a workshop at the end of this, once the, kind of the numerical compilation is done, whereby there could be some discussion and then potentially some opportunity to create kind of summary comments from the board, as opposed to trying to pull sentences from here and there, but kind of working on it together in real time, is that?
I think anything's possible. Um, I, I would suggest that, um, if you're going to do something like that, anybody who wants to submit something for inclusion in that, it gets included, as opposed to debating what can go in and what can't go in, because that's, that gets to become a huge time grab.
Okay.
It's, you know, you and I debating something.
Well, I think what, if I'm understanding correctly, Allison's sugge- Allison's suggestion is that maybe, there might be times when five of us sit together and, you know, one of us has, we've evaluated on a particular criteria quite differently. And that a discussion among the five of us might expand our thinking in ways that brought the disparity closer, actually.
Yeah, it's not clear to me that any meeting of the five of us before the final is prepared, is allowable under the state law. We'd have to get town council to fill us in on that. I think you're right, John. But I don't believe we can.
Okay.
But I think what Allison said is, is you have the final evaluation done, the board reviews it in public, discusses a final statement, and then puts that into the final evaluation after the public discussion? So, that would avoid any problem with the open meeting, John.
It could, yes, it could.
And that was not the school committee.
We can do anything with this, you won't worry. This is just, I just tried to get something started and see where we go with it.
I think, if we, if we can incorporate a step like that, it might be useful.
Okay.
So, do you want me to schedule this for, for upcoming meeting added to our schedule?
I think so, I think it depends a little bit. Do folks feel like at this point, this is, that it makes sense to, to have a conversation with town council about it at this point?
Particularly on that point.
Or, I, I mean, to me, it feels like there's general consensus around this. There might be a question about whether we can add a conversation or not, but it, it feels like, to me, that it's at a point where council could weigh in effectively. Does that-
If, if I can suggest, why don't we have John work directly with Brian, um, on this? Send it off to him, have, uh, John have a conversation with him to walk through the, um, the, the policy and then report back to the board? 'Cause John can explain his thought process and rationale behind it better than anybody else, I think.
Well, right, but it, this suggestion that Allison had, if, maybe the two of them should be involved.
That's fine, I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
That's fine. Um, can you explain why Brian is the right counsel?
He's our labor, he's our labor attorney, and he's the one that drafted the original town manager policy that you've been dealing with. So, it seems to me he should be the one. Uh, that, that's just my recommendation, you can change it.
I'll talk to whoever you want me to. Okay.
Well-
When do you wanna put this back on the agenda for discussion?
Well, you have to, you have to do the review in June.
No, fill out-
Not that I ask, when do you wanna put this policy back on the schedule for discussion?
Next July, you have to start to prepare.
Oh, um, whatever you want me to.
So, can I weigh in on this for a minute?
Yeah.
John, I, I appreciate the work you did on this too. And, uh, I think what you've done is you've streamlined what has been an extremely cumbersome 11, well, maybe 10 reviews that I've done, because we couldn't do one one year if my recollection serves me correct.
That's correct.
And at the same token, while it's streamlined, it also a little bit, it's a little bit alien to me, um, in so much as you've reduced this to a numeric score without any written comments. And I'm, and I'm trying to absorb that. I read this, um, when the package got sent out, and I, and I do appreciate your explanation on this. Now that you've given us this whole packet, I'd like to just review this while I'm at home and read through it, just to see how it would flow, pretending I'm going to be filling this thing out and, and making sure I'm comfortable with it. Um, but my suggestion is, is before you send it off to town council, um, that we have another follow-up discussion after we get a moment to internalize it. For those of you who've participated in one or less, uh, reviews, uh, or, or three or less reviews, this might seem refreshing. And again, it is refreshing. Um, but I just wanna make sure that it encompasses everything that we need to be doing as a, um, as a boss, or the five bosses of the town manager, and making sure that it covers everything. So, I would just like a week or so just to internalize it, and that way we have maybe more intelligent questions before you send this packet off in its current form to town council for review. Does that make any sense, or not, to the rest of you?
I mean, my concern is just getting kind of too set on a process before council weighs in on it. Uh, but I don't, I don't think this, I, there could be two right ways to do this.
Just remember, we send it to town council now, then we have another meeting and we send it back to town council. This isn't about our town, this is ours, correct?
Right.
So, I'm just, not that I'm trying to be cheap on this, but I, I just think it will behoove us.
But why not, let's be cheap and not spend money.
No, I think it will behoove us just to go through it once before and have a discussion before we send it to town council. That's all I'm saying.
That's fine.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that.
Want me to schedule for the 23rd?
Yeah.
'Cause next week, next week, I just want you to concentrate on the warrant.
Yeah. So, I'm actually kind of wondering whether we could incorporate, after we filled out the numerical thing and had the conversations with, with the town manager, that there was a meeting where we all contributed possible comments and debated whether to include those in, in a final synopsis. That's one thought I have, because I, I think, you're right, we may be missing something by not having comments.
We might not be missing that.
What you, what you may wanna do is actually give a document a different name, like feedback to the town manager. Uh, it's not his official performance evaluation, it's feedback. It's outside of the controls of the state business about who can talk to who and what shows and what doesn't show. Uh, so, that is a possibility, I think. But we'd have to check that with, with town man, with the town council.
So, to me, I think there's another benefit or, or need to have some comments in here, and that is, when this becomes a public document, I think it's, it's helpful, you know, if the public looks at this and sees that we have scores on a particular area ranging from one to five, there could be a couple of sentences saying, you know, one member was concerned with this, but the bulk of the board, that, kind of thing. Um, you know, that I, I think some verbiage would be helpful for the public if they're looking at this, whether it's right then or whether it's two or three years later. Um, but, I, I think too, I mean, this is also something that we can create a process, try it once, and then tweak it. It's not-
True.
-set in stone.
I'd also like us to have, and obviously, I'm sure that Mark's had the opportunity while John's been creating this to review it.
John has talked to me throughout the process.
Do you have any con, you don't have to answer it tonight, but I'd like to hear your comments on what you think about this.
Well, I, I like the idea of not having written comments because that sort of bogged this board down last year because some members felt they wanted a comment in there, some members felt they didn't want to comment in there, and it sort of dragged everything on. So, I kinda like the, the one-on-one meetings leading to an evaluation. But I don't have an issue with what Allison recommended tonight, that after the public discussion, if the board wants to just give a paragraph summary of, you know, the town manager excelled in these areas, the town manager needs to work on these areas, you're gonna have that discussion in public, the town manager will have a chance to, to discuss it with you as you have that conversation. I, I think that's a reasonable, um, I, I like what Allison's recommending there. It's just that when you get into the individual comments, if one member feels that that comment needs to be in there and the rest of the board disagrees, we spent a half hour, 45 minutes last year debating one comment, and I think it's a colossal waste of the board's time. Just my two cents, but thank you for asking me, Josh, I appreciate it. I'm glad you asked, thank you. But I, I like Allison's summary idea.
Well, I've worked with Mark and with Melissa throughout all of this effort, so.
So, let's just all study it at home and have the next meeting. I'll put it on the agenda for the 20, for the March 23rd.
Yep.
Um, the one thing, one clarification, is Allison and John gonna talk to Brian or wait until after the 23rd, is that, after the 23rd?
I think we can wait until after.
Okay, perfect.
Just let them know it's coming, though.
Yep, thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so, if we wanna go back to, um, is this the most-
Better receive.
If we wanna go back to, um, ongoing issues?
Yep.
This'll be very brief, 'cause we covered a lot of this, uh, tonight. Um, the press conference we talked about, Water Department, Manganese, I forwarded you an email, um, the state has approved and signed off on the administrative consent order. Now that that's back, that is now a public document that we should post, select board should release all minutes and, and get everything out there. So, we'll do an executive session minute release either the 23rd or the, um, April meeting so that the board can release executive session minutes and, and go through that.
And that consent order could be public.
Absolutely, as a matter of fact, I think, I think Tommy's planning on posting it on the, on the website. So, yes, so that is all resolved. I wanna thank the board, I wanna thank town council, the water commission, Tom Orcut, I think we did a good job getting this thing resolved and, and getting it done. So, the water department now will be moving forward with the planning to address the manganese in the water.
By transporting the water from Whitney Pond well to Bataca well.
Yep, that's the plan. Um, MS4 permit, I do not have an update, polystyrene containers, no update.
We have somebody here from the, uh, Board Health.
Oh, sure, Bob will see an update.
Maybe, maybe there's an update on what the thinking is.
Tom, how is polystyrene?
Yes.
Grab the mic.
Uh, we didn't discuss that in great depth. We, uh, have already tried to find, we've already had our agent contact some major users of these containers to find out, you know, through a letter, to find out if they have any, you know, objections or concerns, what kind of timeframe, but that's kind of where we're at, you know? We haven't, uh, and, and our, and we have decided that we can start by looking at, uh, a nearby town that has such a regulation. It'd probably work from that, once we decide to act, but.
Well, Westford's right next door.
Right, uh, yeah, and we're working Westford today. I use their containers.
So, Bob, I think, um, from our standpoint-
Yeah.
We recognize that this isn't gonna, there's nothing gonna be ready, obviously, for this spring town meeting, the warrant's already closed.
Right.
But if something, if your board is in a position to recommend that we move on adopting a ban or presenting a ban to town meeting, we would hope to do that in the fall.
Right, I assume, we're assuming that this should be done the same way of the bag ban is done through the, uh, an article town meetings, not simply a Board Health regulation.
This is something I had brought up at town meeting, um, or during last discussion concerning the plastic bag ban. If you're gonna look at banning polystyrene containers, why don't you look at banning straws, plastic straws at the same time? And anything along those times, so we stop bringing this thing back piecemeal? If you're going to ban certain products within the town, look at banning them all at once, that's what I'm suggesting.
You're right. Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't offhand know if straws are made with polystyrenes or not.
No, no, it's a different, it's a really a different issue, but kind of related in the sense of trash.
Well, I've been in several places where we've gone back to paper straws.
Right.
They still work pretty good.
And that's because of pressure, right.
I tell you, the paper straws that, you know, have, I've seen in local communities, if you keep them in your drink for longer than 20 minutes, you have mush strung.
They're no good.
However, when I was in California very recently, they've got really good paper straws. I don't know what's in them, but.
It's like anything else, it's the quality.
I was gonna say-
The plastic that's in the straw.
I was gonna say, do you ever have a drink more than 20 minutes? I'm kidding. I'm joking. I, I couldn't resist, Josh, I apologize. Let's move on.
Good rating here.
I just tried to be funny. Josh knows I'm joking.
Thank you, Bob.
The straw.
I couldn't resist that one, I'm sorry. I'm gonna pay for that by review.
Sure you are. It's okay. All right, we're down to green community's application.
Um, green communities' application and implementation, I believe that it went in last week, so we'll just wait until here, uh, on, on whether or not our $138,000 worth of projects is approved. Uh, Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, uh, the, the committee is really laser-focused on, uh, on the project, on determining the, um, where the location is gonna be. And one of the interesting debates that they're gonna have at the meeting, we're meeting tomorrow night, is whether or not we're going to do design build, bid, build process, or something that they call, uh, CMR at risk.
CMR.
Which basically allows you to hire a GC before you go out to bid and you actually build the project with the general contractor. It's a very interesting process. So, the committee is debating that and is gonna make a decision. I'm, I'm old school, I'm old school, which is design, bid, build, but there are interesting aspects to the CMR at risk, and both our OPM and architect are in favor of that process. So, I can get you more information on it, so you'll understand it moving forward, but it is a very interesting, interesting process.
The, the biggest appeal, and I haven't decided where I follow this, but the biggest appeal of the CMR at risk is that you don't have to just go with the low bidder on things, so that you get to have a little more say in, in kind of quality theoretically as you're going along, not just, you had the lowest number, here's your envelope, open it up and go.
That is a benefit, and we've learned, you, you all know, with some of our projects, taking the lowest bid isn't always in the best interest of the project. You know, we've gotten lucky with the, uh, DPW building, we had problems with the fire station, mixed bag at the senior center, so it, it's, low bid isn't always the best, so I think that is a very interesting aspect of it. But I gotta tell you, this building committee is really working hard and they're, they're doing a great job, uh, with, with the project. I'm, I'm enjoying that process, and I know Allison is, is as well, right?
Usually.
Usually, yes. Um, and then I got some-
That's objective.
I got some mixed news, I got some mixed news on the Highway Garage renovation. That generator is gonna be the end of, of me. Um, it was supposed to be delivered next week, and we received word that there's another four-week delay. So, that is preventing the highway, uh, department from moving the trucks into our beautiful new building, because the fire chief will not allow, without the fire suppression system, and you need the backup generator to do the fire suppression system. He's allowing us in the main building because we can do a fire watch for that building, he will not allow at night, support the fire chief 100%. So, today, they started to install, at total cost of the contractor, not the town, a temporary generator, uh, that should be done by the end of this week, and then the highway department can move in next week into the building and move all the trucks in there. Um, so, it is a small delay, but we're gonna get into the building next week, and then the new generator should be here in about a month. So, other than that, I talked to Tom Delaney, uh, today on this matter, and they are so pleased with the facility. So, the question to the board that I wanted to ask tonight is, when do y'all want me to take you down there and show you, uh, what's going on? Because I would love to give you a tour, um, of the building. Josh, I know you've been through it.
I've seen it.
Um, but I don't know if any, I know John has been through the building committee, but Becky, Allison, John, if you wanna get down there, let me know, call me. I'd be more than happy to meet you down there, you will like what you see. It's not extravagant, but it is very good and it's very useful.
Very functional.
That's the word I'm looking for, functional.
Do you anticipate kind of a public ribbon cutting?
We talked about that, I wanna wait until we get the final coat of pavement down and, and the landscaping and done. Sometime after, you know, at town meeting time, that should be all done.
Yeah, I'd like to see you wait until we've got the equipment in the second building before we, you know, not, not only for the public, but even for my fellow members.
We should be doing that next week.
Otherwise, it just looks like a big empty building.
Right.
Wait till the birds have done. Exactly.
Uh, Mark, I have a question. It's not on the list, but do we think that the housing production plan is gonna come in?
I was told that I'll have it on March 20th, that's why I put it on the agenda for March 23rd, so, yes. If, if it's not, I think I forwarded you the email saying March 20th. So, I'm, I, I will follow up again, we're talking to you this week to make sure.
Thank you.
Um, so, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Allison.
Does anyone have liaison reports? All right, and I would entertain a motion to approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes? As amended, it looked like there was written there.
Yeah, there's a couple of suggestions that I made that don't incorporate it, I believe.
Excuse me.
I move that we approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm pleased to say we are adjourned.
Hey, look what, look what's in the note.